So Greg, there in the contract called for a six-month performance evaluation.
Oh, yeah?
Yes, which was held by a written performance evaluation by all members of the council and all members of the department heads. And in the April meeting, closed session, those evaluations were evaluated, circulated between the council members, and it was determined unanimously that the city manager was doing a fine job, satisfactory job, and that the ad hoc committee between Vice Mayor and the mayor to meet with city manager to review the evaluation, and that meeting was held, and then the ad hoc committee to talk about compensation. Part of the evaluation that the ad hoc committee did, used, was this compensation survey and the fact that in June, part of the contract, city manager's contract stipulated that the quote-unquote, I call it travel allowance, but it's travel and living allowance of $2,500 a month would go away because at that time it was anticipated he was going to move into the house. That issue is no longer viable. He is not going to move into the city manager's house. It is not legal for the town of Atherton to require him as a condition of his employment to live in the house, or even to be evaluated by not living in the house. So the value of the house has been set in previous years at $5,000 a month. He's getting, the travel allowance is going away, $2,500 a month. So we're rolling that into the salary, the base salary. He's taking all of the hits of the purse contribution and other adjustments of health benefits that the other employees are getting. It is an effective reduction in take-home salary of over $5,000.
All right, I was just concerned about the time of, but you said there was a provision in the original contract-
Yes.
-to allow for a six-month evaluation.
Yes.
Because I think if somebody, you know, you're saying you hired Boyd for six months and give him 20% raise on-
No, no.
The public is not going to be happy.
That's not it.
But I'm just saying this was a provision that was in the contract-
Right.
...for a special review at the end of six months.
Exactly, exactly.
Just a performance review, not a compensation review.
So I'd like to make a motion that we amend the employment agreement of the city manager of Town Atherton to, and everyone has a copy in their packets of the agreement, to amend the date to the June 1st, 2013. In the preamble, in section two, term and termination severance, to change the date to June 1st, 2013. On page two, under item four, compensation, to change the language. Town shall pay a base salary of $190,000. Change the word sixty to ninety, and in the parentheses, numericals, one-nine-zero, comma, zero-zero-zero, dot, zero-zero, one-hundred-and-ninety-thousand, in parentheses, per year. And then at the end of that first sentence, to strike the remainder of the paragraph that reads, "Manager shall also receive a temporary monthly living and travel allowance of $2,500, $2,500 from the date of hire until June 30th, 2013, or until manager permanently relocates to the Atherton area, whichever comes first. This allowance shall not be reportable as compensation to campers. Manager shall also receive a cellular telephone allowance of up to $100 per month based on the actual cost." I'd like to correct myself. Instead of the dates being June, make it July 1st, because this goes through June 30th. And then in item number five, paragraph evaluation, to change the words, "manager shall" to "manager has," received, make "receive" a past tense, and initial, a satisfactory initial six-month performance evaluation, add the words, "a satisfactory six-month performance evaluation." And then the second line, "and shall receive an annual evaluation thereafter," put the words "shall receive" instead of "and," "an annual evaluation thereafter." On page three, section eight should be struck in its entirety. And then renumbering the rest of the paragraphs, number eight, other benefits, number nine, professional meetings, number 10, reimbursement of expenses, number 11, indemnification, number 12, entire agreement, number 13, notices, number 14, interpretation of agreement and form, number 15, severalability, number 16, survival, number 17, conflict of interest, number 18, execution. And that will be the modifications requested in the employment agreement of the city manager. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'd like to offer, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes, may.
Thank you. The motion passes three to one. Thank you very much. Our next items that were on the consent calendar have been moved to this position. It's items number 13 and 14. And I think Mr. Widmer pulled number 13-
Right.
And the city manager pulled number 14.
So my reasons for pulling number 13 are a few items. First off, with regards to the overall policy, I think that if a group is asking for a waiver, but they're doing some sort of fundraising and they're going to make money, I'm not so sure that, I think there should be a provision in there not to, we shouldn't be waiving something, letting them have something for free so that they can make more money, when we're actually paying for the park itself. Secondly, in the section number three, it did have some items in there that talked about the budget, you know, it's going to be reviewed with regards to the budget. My question on that is, is I'm not really sure what budget we're talking about. If it's associated with the subsequent items that talk about, maybe we should have a budget if you know what you get.
Excuse me, can we have some quiet, please? Thank you very much, George. No, excuse me. Thank you.
You didn't hear what I said, did you?
I did, I did. And that's why I've called you down. No, I didn't hear what you said. Okay, I just was having a hard time hearing Mr. Widmer.
That's okay.
No, no, I really need to hear every word you're saying, so.
Good night.
Okay, anyway. Item three, this does discuss, the waiver would be reviewed in the context of the overall budget. I don't know what budget we're talking about. Later on, there was a discussion, subsequent, it talks about, maybe we should set up a budget and then, and then we'll allow people, we can waive and waive and waive until the budget runs out. Well, I think that setting up a FIFO system, you know, first come, first served, isn't fair either. We need to have a set policy, and whatever it is, it is. So, so I think that is essentially my comment. So to summarize again, was that if an organization is asking for a waiver, but then they're making money, I would like us to consider that that should kind of nullify the request for a fee waiver. It's unclear, and maybe George, you can comment, or George, you can comment, on what the budget is that we are actually talking about, which is in the second paragraph, fee waiver would be reviewed in the context of the overall budget. And then I don't like the fact that there's this first come, first served situation. Either we're going to waive or we're not going to waive, based on specific criteria that needs to be identified. It can't be kind of a squishy situation. Thank you.
Do we have any other council member that wants to make a comment on this? Item number 13. Council, Vice Mayor, Colson? George, would you like to answer the questions?
Sure, I can certainly comment on those. This policy only applies to events at Holbrook Palmer Park and banners. And then also, it only allows groups such as the Atherton Standing Committees, town groups, town committees, and community-
This is not the banner one. This is number 13.
I understand. The under purpose within the policy, it says, "The policy is only applicable to fees related to events at Holbrook Palmer Park and the display of banners in town-authorized locations." So these are the only two fees that could be waived. The only groups that can, are eligible for fee waivers are standing committees, city council, and community designated groups. This is the Arts Foundation, the Holbrook Palmer Art Foundation, and the Dames.
Governments, government entities.
Well, I don't mind the characterization. I guess that my question was-
Overall budget?
Which budget are you talking about?
He's going to get-
I'm addressing your first question first, in terms of if it's a fundraiser. The groups that are actually eligible for the fee waiver are by their very nature doing fundraisers for the park or park events and things like that, with the exception of the Arts Foundation, which might be doing some for personal gain in some respects. So they're providing a direct service that's similar to a town, town goal or other thing. And then governmental agencies. So those are the only groups that actually can ask for a fee waiver. The Dames, the Arts Foundation, and the Holbrook Palmer Park Foundation do not pay a fee for any activity that they use the park for already. So they're not going to be asking for a fee there. The only place, fee waiver there, the only place they would ask for that fee waiver is for a banner. That's $75. So that's all in terms of the groups and who would ask for them. In terms of the budget, I put in their overall budget, but we could certainly be more specific and say, "Overall parks budget." In this new 12, 13, 14 budget, we're going to have a P and L as it looks at the parks programs, so we could certainly put overall parks budget, and it would make sense.
So it's our budget?
Yes.
Okay.
And then in terms of the cap, I wanted to leave some flexibility in there, should this council and/or a future council desire to go back and establish some sort of cap. That's the only reason that's-
But somebody very worthwhile could be. That's my point on the first come, first served. Somebody very worthwhile-
Yeah, yeah.
Could come, and at the end we say, "Sorry."
Exactly, that's how it would work, correct.
Yeah, and then many, some of these organizations only have things going on in summer.
Understood.
Yeah.
Understood. So any other discussion, any public comment on this item number 13? Fee waiver policy? I can't say it.
Fee waiver policy?
I can't. Fee waiver policy. Okay, so here we go. I think it's good to clarify it, because as you know, we had this issue, and we kind of scrambled around and scratched our heads. So if we have a policy, it makes it easier for staff, and I don't think it's an onerous policy. I think it gives room for, you know, discretion, but it also gives, you know, guidelines. So I would like to call for a motion to accept this fee waiver policy, with the exception of clarifying that it is the parks budget.
So move.
Second. All in favor?
Well, I'd like to make a modification suggestion, that we don't have this first come, first served situation.
I don't see a first come, first served situation there. And I'm not going to, I'm not going to agree to that.
You don't want me to?
Okay. We have a motion and a second, and I'm going to call for the, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Well, I'm opposed because I don't like the cap, which is at the end of policy three.
Aye. Okay, that's good. Okay, so item number 14 is the approval of the banner policy. Oh, the banner. Oh, the banner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The reason I pulled this one from the consent agenda is it's going to involve a little bit more discussion in terms of which groups are eligible to use the banner site. Presently, we have a town permit, and you can see the permit is part of your packet. And it clearly says that banner permits are for town-sponsored events, but that's not always been the practice. Sometimes there's other groups that have been allowed to post banners up there, Menlo Atherton High School, Performing Arts Center, sign-ups for Little League, Nativity Church has used it for their pre-sale. So there's been other groups that have used it, and the town has issued them a permit. They've put the, we've put the banner up and taken it down. So in practice, we're not following our own policy and having it for quite some time. So we looked at that and developed this banner policy, and the banner policy that's before you this evening is exactly the way it's actually implemented. It allows, under item number three and number four, one to the fourth paragraph down on the banner policy, the following shall have priority over all banners in order as follows. Town of Atherton is number one. Number two is Atherton Standing Committees, council, and community designated groups. Number three is park vendor groups, and number four is organizations associated with Atherton residents. It's the number three and number four that are concerning. And when you do banners in a banner policy like ours, in actual practice, by allowing those groups on the town banner site, we're kind of kicking open the door to anybody and everybody who wants to use the site. And so the question before the council this evening, and the city attorney's going to add some more to it after I'm done, is do we want to take out number three and number four and clearly say, "Town-sponsored events only," or leave number three and number four in there, recognizing that we are opening the door to any group that might want to use that banner site, because we can't regulate content and allow them to put banner up? And so I'll turn it over to Bill, who might, like, want?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I, well, this was emailed to me, I kind of shuddered, because this is a hot topic item in the state of California. And so I can't get out to the city attorney's group. We have our own little electronic connection, and I got feedback from a number of cities, in particular, two. One, the city attorney whose opinion I value most overall on a day-to-day basis. And secondly, the guru of all sign issues and problems, guy named Randy Morrison from Southern California. I will quote from Randy Morrison's, "The safe answers are, one, no banners at all," and he quotes a U.S. Supreme Court case, "or, two, strictly city speech only, no public participation at all," quoting a Santa Monica Food Not Bombs case. Now, I also got input from a highly respected attorney who said, he said, "I generally advise my clients not to allow their polls to become a public forum. Rather, by written policy, they should state that the polls may bear only those signs which bear the city's own messages. Some of those messages, of course, may endorse community events, but the city should have some meaningful role in those events, meaning like sponsorship, to avoid a claim that the city has in fact opened the forum to non-city speech." Any other course is going to put you in a place where you have to fly banners for Nazis, Boy Scouts, political groups, et cetera. And the problem there is, we cannot regulate content once it becomes a public forum. So anybody, hate speech, anything, we're going to have to put up there. And we are not going to be able to have this priority system, because that, in order to prioritize, you have to look at the content. And so it becomes very problematic, yeah. I think that if you did away with three and four, you don't lose anything, because those can wrap into the first two. For instance, a vendor in the park, and George and I kicked this around today. If the vendor in the park is a for-profit company, and all they're doing, you know, the dog training, all they're doing is using our park because it's a convenient place for them to make money, I don't think they should be allowed to advertise on a banner. That's just commercial speech. Change that slightly to maybe the Little League, and they're not exactly a vendor, but they're a heavy user of the park. If they were having a big playoff series, or they made it to a certain level, could the town allow them to use that as our speech, because it's our park, and we might want to promote this as a town event? That's fine. But notice, I've taken away three and four and wrapped them into one and two, to where all the speech that goes on those banners, and I wish Jim were here, because he's been a consistent complainer about many of the banners, weren't even about Atherton events. And that's clearly not our speech. And the problem is, when you open it up like that, I mean, literally, you don't have a choice at that point in time. Anybody that comes in and says, "This is what I want to put up there. I want to advertise camel races. I want to advertise Ku Klux Klan rally in the park." You know, these are the kind of things that I think we should try to avoid, if at all possible. And then beyond that, the one thing you don't want to do is leave very much discretion at all. The less discretion, the better constitutionally your policy is, when it comes to free speech and imposing on free speech. And that's what regulating the banner is going to be argued to you. It's going to come back, and somebody's going to say, "Well, wait a second, that's my commercial free speech, and now last year I could do it, this year I can't." The last thing you want to do is say, "Well, and everything is subject to council discretion." The only discretion that is safe, in a sense, is if you're sponsoring an event in some way. And that may be, going back to the last item, granting a fee waiver so that we can sponsor this as our event. Or it may be granting a special exception of some kind to them, and putting on their, you know, on all their publications, that this is their event, and it's co-sponsored by, or sponsored by, or supported by the town of Atherton. There's where we get turning this into government speech. And that's, government speech is not the same thing as public speech. And we want to draw that distinction, because then the banner is ours, and we get to control it.
So the banners that have gone up to recruit kids for lacrosse or Little League wouldn't be allowed under interpretation?
They might be allowed. Again, the interpretation is if, I mean, I don't think it's a stretch, if the city council said, "We want lacrosse use of our park, of our park," and-
Because we get revenue from it.
Well, we get revenue from it, and we also get our kids to use it. Now, unfortunately, because of the location of the banner, it's really directed more at non-citizens than citizens, in a sense. There are far more users coming up Marsh Road that are not citizens. Our citizens cross on Middlefield, and they can't see the banner because it's sideways to them.
That's not true. I'm constantly coming up Marsh Road.
Well, no, no, I didn't say that our citizens don't come up Marsh Roads. I just said, "The majority of users of Marsh Road aren't our citizens." So it's not a very effective banner for conveying our government message, but it's as good as we've got.
Why don't we just get rid of the banners?
I would be thrilled.
So would the guy that lives up this-
I want to get rid of the Constantina wire, actually.
Well, that's a difference.
I'm sorry. I shouldn't have said that. Okay. Public comment?
You know, as a student of the law, and not a California attorney, I would say that you would want to give as much latitude as possible. I mean, this is a public, you know, public forums are streets, sidewalks, and parks, generally. Now, whether you can, you can argue whether that's one of those three or not, but I would say, unless, I mean, I don't understand why you would want to restrict it. I mean, it's a benefit for the citizens to know what's going on and what they're doing. Now, I can see, the issue is a political, you know, when you've got people putting their signs out, running for office, I think that's a more challenging area. But the rest of this is, I mean, why are you, why are you trying to restrict it? I mean, public speech is a heart of our government.
So Greg, I think what the city attorney was saying is that if we can restrict it to Atherton-associated events only, then we can restrict the free speech of maybe some crazy people who come and want to put up an offensive banner, that inappropriate banner that has nothing to do with our town.
Or even, I mean, Greg, you hit, you hit the nail on the head, in a sense. Okay, so I want to run for office, and so I put my banner up there. Now, I want my banner to stay up there all the way through the election, and since we only have one place for it, now you can't put your banner up there that opposes me. And therein is the rub.
Well, I couldn't survive.
Because there's one space for one banner. That's what we have. And unless we're talking-
Oh, you're talking about the white banner from Runson.
Yeah, that's-
In front of Marsh Road.
That's the only banner we own.
That's the only banner we're talking about.
Because you've used, there's other signs that are below it.
No.
No, they're admin political signs, and those are legal to put them below it. All we're talking about is the ability to use our polls to stretch a banner on our polls that then conveys a message. And if we keep that to a government, a town government message, then we don't have to worry about somebody coming in and say, you know, "The American Nazi Party wants to hold a rally somewhere." Let's say they want to hold it in San Jose. Right now, today, under the policies we have, we would, and under the Constitution, we would have to put their banner up. Now, what would our citizens think of that?
No, because we say town-sponsored.
Because if it's a public forum, just like a sidewalk, they have a right to protest. And then that means anybody.
Why, because you've got a problem. I mean, have you ever had a situation where you're dealing with this? I mean, I'm not sure what the issue is.
Yeah, I'm going to say-
We've had some.
The way that the permit is written, that it is for town-sponsored events only, I know a situation a few years ago where a, the Palo Alto Little League wanted to come and put a banner up, and they were refused because it was not a town-sponsored event. And this, yeah.
There's more in the permit as you go down. It talks about any groups associated with Atherton residents are eligible to put up banners.
It's been pretty broadening.
Yeah, then they said, "We'll put Atherton in the name," and then there was a group in Palo Alto, and they said, "Well, what happens if we say the Palo Alto, blah, blah, Atherton group?"
Yeah, right.
And so they would, they would make a special thing, but they really, the meeting was going to be in Palo Alto, and so-
Right, right. So, yeah, so we really do need to clean this up. I really, I really-
Well, if you're going to air, I would air, I'd be more public than less, just as a matter of conscience.
Thank you, thank you for that. Do you want to take this back and?
I think if we just eliminate three and four, to the city attorney's point, we can roll up other groups in there that qualify as one of those groups. And if there's a special group that the council wants to participate with?
Yeah, I guess because my comment, when I read through it, and you know, it says number four, organizations associated with Atherton residents, I said, "Well, define, I mean, only town-authorized organizations, or any other independent, you know, group like the Atherton Mitting Society or something? I don't know."
That's exactly right. I don't know if we have one.
Well, I'm going to, I'm about to form one, and I hope you will join me.
I will, I will.
Should we make it a requirement that they also state on the banner that it's a town-sponsored event?
I think we just get rid of three and four for the-
If you get rid of three and four, let staff work with athletes that come in. I think that if there's a questionable one, I think that's a good thing that we can require them to do at our level, to clearly indicate that this is not, I mean, as it is right now, if solid waste for the whole region wanted to put up a banner, even if it were for some other solid base, not ours.
So we're going to entertain a motion.
Okay, so I'd like, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this policy with the elimination as suggested by the city attorney and the city manager, to eliminate sections three and four, and allow the city manager then to manage that opportunity and bring forward things that he feels are appropriate, which is essentially what-
I'll second that motion.
And before the council approves it, make it effective immediately, but for the eight groups that already have their spots, there's probably only two through November that would not fall within the policy. That is the Atherton Lacrosse, who's got an application, I think it's been approved, and then Menlo Ballet, which has got one approved for November. So if those could be allowed-
With the exception of those two.
The exception of grandfathered grandfathered.
Right, grandfathered the two.
Amended, okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
Call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. So I think the next item is council reports. So we have three council member reports. We don't have a full house again. Is there any report that council member Widmer would like to make orally?
No, I had an excellent time doing non-city stuff over the last couple of weeks. That's why I'm in such good humor.
Okay, so there was, and I've lost it in all of my paperwork, I'm sorry. There's a council of cities meeting tomorrow, Friday night, at East Palo Alto for seasons. East Palo Alto's the host city. And before the city councils, there is a city selection meeting where they are going to elect, appoint a person to sit on the board. There's only one applicant, so that's, that's not, nothing for us to talk about. But there are, there's only one-